Got it? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy, Bush, Daughlin.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Mutola.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers, absent.
Schoolnick.
Here.
Tedford Andrew.
Here.
Tedford Jim.
Here.
Wendis.
Here.
Winkler.
Here.
Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for Citizens Forum? Seeing none? All right. So today we are going to go into executive session in the order so that they can get ready for the after excitement for our Christmas little get-together. So, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut, general statutes 1-206D hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations relative to 147 Bolton Road invites John W. Kleinhand, town administrator, to attend.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. All those in favor? Unanimous. We'll be back, guys. Okay. All right, Brian, you want to read the motion? We're going to have some discussion on that. We're not talking about the other stuff.
We're going to do consent first, or no?
No, I think they wanted to talk about it.
All right. Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the contract for 147 Bolton Road, Vernon, Connecticut, with pelletier construction management in an amount not to exceed $1,869,000 for the installation of a prefabricated steel building.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. All right. Phyllis, go ahead.
Mike.
To you, Mr. Mayor. When we agreed at the last meeting to purchase this land, we didn't designate its use. And I agreed that was a great place to buy a piece of property, and I supported it. Now, we're being told that it's already decided it's going to be an extension to the senior center. I would like to discuss the idea of making it a community center. The senior center is very much needed. It's very well-used. It's great. But most nights, it's closed, and every weekend, it's closed, and nobody can use it for anything. So, this extension seems like it would be a place that could be maybe designated for seniors during the week when the senior center is open. But nights and weekends, I don't understand why it can't be a community center. We could do some great things with it, and there are lots of parts of our community who would love a community center. So, I would like to see it be a combined use, and I'd like to hear what other people think instead of just going straight to a vote.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Bill.
A question to you. Does the motion that we're voting on tonight constrain the use of the building that we're contracting for?
Well, the motion that we're doing tonight...
To clarify my question, my understanding is that we're simply voting to approve the contract to build a structure.
Exactly.
So, can we put a place mark in it and say that perhaps at some future time, we can have a conversation about exactly how the usage of that structure is going to be allocated? Because I agree with Phyllis. I think the senior center is great. My wife's a member. I haven't gotten down there to join yet, but I think it's great. But it does seem like we can possibly use that property and that building in a more general way. And it would be nice to know that we're going to have the option to talk about that in the future.
Anybody else?
What's the square footage of the building going to be?
Do you hear that? I think we wrote it down. Yeah, pull up to let you know. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, whoever I'm talking to, I just want to say that I am a member. I am a frequent user of the senior center. And I feel it's really important and special for our seniors to have a place that they can go. In the summer times, they do use it in the evenings. I, as a teacher, know that sometimes, you know, you put it out for the kids, and, you know, things don't always stay as nice as the, you know. So I really think that our seniors deserve a place of their own. I... I, I do some activities that here, we have a short ceiling, and we need that higher building. Um, I, I am for keeping it a senior center, and I really feel that our seniors deserve that. I don't understand why, with all the schools and the gymnasiums and the other facilities there that are available for the kids, why we can't just have a place for our seniors. I think it's really important for our senior population. Thank you.
Mike.
Through you, Mayor. Speaking as a father who has a daughter of the teenage age, we had a youth center, you know, formerly where the Y Building was, and my daughter used to attend it, and, um, very, not attended that well. People really don't want to work there, or volunteer to work there, whatever, you can't staff it. Kids just sit around and play on their cellphones.
Mike, we gotta stay on to the subject.
Yep, so, I mean, to me, the greater need is for our seniors to have this building, and to utilize it, and use it for their activities and stuff, until it's proven that we could house, or even have the attendance to bother that other conversation, I think it's needed right now to, um, to be there for our seniors, and to allow them to have the use in the building of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you, and/or through you, um, I'm seven months shy of being eligible for the Senior Center, so I'm, I'm not doing this to, for any benefit to myself, yet, anyway, but, as I understand it, the Senior Center is one of the greatest things that the town has going for it. It's basically bursting at the seams with over 4,000 members. I hear from friends of my mother-in-law specifically about all the wonderful events she attends there, and it seems to me that it, that a use here, it would be, since it's located next to the Senior Center, the proposed area, and the Senior Center has, is in need of space, apparently, in terms, for things like volleyball, chair volleyball, and other events that I hear about, it seems to me that a natural progression would be to use the, the space next to the Senior Center as an expansion of the Senior Center, which appears to be necessary, given the numbers of members, and the numbers of events, and the, and the size of events that take place there. So, I, I think something for seniors is, is needed, it's been utilized, it's been successful, and we should build on that success, and use it for what we have proposed it for as an expansion of the Senior Center. Thank you.
Lori.
To you, Mayor, um, the verbiage we had today was not a teen center, it was a community, and from my understanding, seniors are part of a community. I'm a little apprehensive, not apprehensive, a little irritated, a little bit, that everyone assumed that Ms. Winkler was talking about a teen center, and she didn't say that, she said "community," so that, "community" means all ages, and all, everybody for the town. I do agree, when we first voted, it was just to buy the property, and not to build nothing on it. Maybe I missed a few meetings where we had the conversation of options to build on it, or it happened before the new of us, the new, the newbies got on the board to build on it, but it was just a question of what's needed in the town. Nobody sent a survey out, or asked anyone of what the town would like, we're just building the sand and building the seniors. I am eligible for the Senior Center, and I do plan on joining soon, so, and I hear it's a wonderful space, and you're right, people need to be active to stay alive, and it keeps them moving, but we have an opportunity to build something for our town, and since we're Town Council members, our goal is supposed to do what's best for our town collectively, which is all ages, and all communities, I think it would be fair if we had that discussion.
Bill, second time?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to follow on Counselor Abernathy's point, I am, I want to clarify, speaking for myself, and I think speaking for all of us who've spoken on this side, nobody's talking about trying to take anything away from the seniors. We are just interested in making sure that we optimize the use of that property for the town, and, you know, even if it's something as simple as allowing that building to be used for other things when the Senior Center isn't using it, I just, I, I recognize that tonight, all we're doing is voting on the contract for the building, but I do, I do think we should have a more nuanced discussion at a later date about exactly how that structure will be used, and, and I, resent is too strong a word, but I'm frustrated that our comments have been characterized as if we were trying to steal something from seniors, which is not what's going on here. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jesse.
Well, Bill kind of said most of what I was going to say, but I have no problem with what is being proposed here, I have no problem giving seniors, you know, the first crack at anything that's being used at this new structure, but, as Bill mentioned, if everybody mentioned, I think, on our side, on the Democrat's side, that if it's not being, if it's not in use, I don't understand why there's a problem with the discussion that maybe this be, um, open for other events, other people to use, and I, I think it's unfair to, uh, not want people to, a certain group of people to use it on the potential of what could have been done, you know, they could potentially do something bad, I think, as a community, we have to have, go into things with best intentions, and assume positive intent, and if a group does want to use it, and it's not being used by the seniors, I don't think there's any reason why it shouldn't be available to other people in the community. We're, we're all here in Vernon, and if the spot is there, and it could be put to great use, and it's not being used by the Senior Center, why not allow it?
Bill, second time?
Thank you, to you. So I will reiterate that, I, I got the message that some people want to make it look like I'm trying to take something away from seniors. I am not. The Senior Center as it is, stays as it is, they're not losing anything. If we go along with what I'm thinking, and others are thinking, we would expand, build this building, make it available to seniors during Senior Center hours, and also make it available to the community when it's not in use by the seniors. So, if we don't do that, we're saying to the community, "No, we don't want to let you use this space," and there are people in the community who already feel that about the Senior Center. Why can't we use it on the weekend? It's closed. Why can't a group rent it? Why, why can't, I don't know, um, youth services, I don't mean to pick on Michelle over there, but, why can't youth services, they have an idea for something that's too big to do in the facilities we have, and the school buildings are in use a lot, which is great. I don't understand why we would deny the use of the building when it's not being used by seniors. That's my point. So if it's a community center, with senior center use as the priority, and the rest of the time, open it to the community. But please don't put words in my mouth that I'm trying to take anything away from the seniors. A vote for this could be giving the seniors more, but it's not mutually exclusive. Giving something to someone does not mean, "No one else can play with my toys," and that's what it, that's what it sounds like.
So the building is 6,630 square feet, it's a small building, gymnasium type. Center 375 is available to the community through the Parks and Recreation, which has a comparable gymnasium. And, it's interesting what you said, but I'm gonna go back six years, more like seven years, when the whole discussion started about the Senior Center, and what was said at the time, by your party, all the way across the board, and that is, the Senior Center should be a community center. That's what was said, and you, and when we tried to vote it in, again, that's what was said. We, we put very little money directly towards the seniors, except for the Senior Center, and, in fact, there were people that would approach me, because this conversation continued for years afterwards, about it should be converted to a community center, and the seniors shouldn't have their own facility, and, and I disagree with that. I think they deserve their own facility, they pay their taxes, just like everybody else, and when you look around town, there's so many activities that we have available for our community, and we have buildings that are available for our community, and Center 375 is not the schools, that is a town building. You know, I understand if this, this facility was able to have gymnasiums and everything else, but it, it's not, it literally is a large, open room, and we call it a gymnasium because it has a high ceiling. So, when I hear the conversation that you're going after the, you know, that you guys aren't going after the seniors, we go back seven, six, seven years ago, that's exactly what was said, that the whole building should be. There were people that played cards there on a weekly basis, and were, continued to talk about it, and I know that, because, being down there, they would approach me, and I'd have to put fires out about it. So I know exactly what was said back then, and, uh, so when we talk about what I'm listening to tonight, and the conversation, you know, it's almost as if this, the same thing's happening when this whole thing was presented years ago.
And our party did not take it.
No, you already talked twice, Phyllis, you cannot speak out of term.
I didn't finish.
You, you did finish, you, you're speaking out of term.
I didn't finish.
Yes, you did, Phyllis.
You spoke, well, I, I finished the sentence.
I waited, I waited a second, you were finished, Phyllis, you cannot cut in and try and get a third term, you know that.
I wasn't finished, but...
Well, you were finished. The point is, is that, you know, when this came forward, and, and we did this property, yeah, in the future, we wanted to do something, and then we had to finish up our books on the ARPA funds, and, and, and this was an idea, and until, you know, normally, this conversation would have taken place, already, this is what we want to do, this is the amount of money we have, and we would go do it, that was shut off to me, and, and, and so I have to go through the whole process, and then bring it before the council, then the council decides what they want to do. And that's, that's what we have to live with now. And that's where we are tonight. So, yeah, a senior center, an expansion, yeah, when we're at 4,000 members, and we continue to grow every single month, I, I, I think we knew we had to expand sometime, and the best expansion was that property, and then this opportunity arose with the ARPA funds, to pay for it with the federal money, instead of the tax, the town taxpaying money, they're all, it's all taxpayer money in the end, and, and that's where this idea came from, and this is what we're pushing forward tonight. Should, do I think it should be a senior center? Absolutely, I think it should be a senior center, I think it should be an expansion of the senior center. Why? Because, you know, they, they deserve it, they deserve their, their, their spot in town, and that land is right adjacent to it, and, uh, I knew it was gonna happen someday, well, here it is before us, and we get to vote on it. So, Laura, your second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you and others. I'd like to also say that my concern with the idea of opening that, um, building to the community center, uh, is, my concern is that what's to say in the future, um, it's not posed that the, then the Senior Center opens up again, and they want to take the whole thing to make it a community center, and I really feel that this Senior Center needs to be protected for its members, because they cherish it, and we are such a lucky town to have such a great facility with wonderful people, and they cherish it. So I'm gonna say we need to protect the Senior Center.
Anybody else? Lori, second time.
To you, Mayor, um, Ms. Bush, I do agree with you that the seniors do need to be protected, but since we're the Town Council, we can write the bylaws and determine the usage of that building, and if we make it primary for the seniors, and it's their building, then we, we have the right to make the rules so that it doesn't get taken over. I mean, that's our job, it's the mayor's job, he could set rules in place and set up stuff down the future. This building is primary for the seniors' usage at their will, so they have it, but we can also share usage space, and then if we let other communities use it, they could maybe rent it, which could build money to help pay for the Senior Center. So there is a way that the town could get some funding or some monies out of that, even if they're sharing it to other people, like, out-of-town folks need a center, do something, they could use that, there's no convention center here, there's no, well, there is in Hartford, but nothing like here in Vernon to do a, a large Christmas party, or something larger that they would like to do, someone could maybe rent it out to still get funds, either to the town, or to pay for the Senior Center. I agree with you, the seniors need to be taken care of, they need to have shelter and housing, and, that's true, but since, if, since we're the town, and we have the mayor, we're the ones that can determine how that building is going to be used from now and into the future. You can put it into the bylaws, you can go to, put it into the contract, or whatever, that would always protect the seniors.
Anybody else? Second time?
Through you, Mayor. I just don't see the problem of, throughout our town, we have designated spots for certain things, um, you know, athletic fields that are used for this, that's all they can be used for, um, the new soccer field's used for this, that's all they can be used for. So, the seniors have their facility, this is where they call home, this is where they feel safe, it's where they have their events, it's where they gather, this is where they, everybody meets, they make new friends, and all that stuff. This is where they call home, not just Vernon, Ellington, you know, all those surrounding towns, um, we have a lot of members from a lot of different areas, and, um, just, I feel this should be designated just for what it is, and what the purpose of it is, and give them a place to call home, and a place to have, just theirs. Thank you.
Marion.
I've been here since the beginning, when this first started. We, we did our questionnaire, asking of when and how to spend the money, I see the projects that were done, and I think it was divvied out as fairly as possible. I'm gonna support this totally, as, as a senior, um, building, realizing that we do have other buildings in town that can be used. I don't want to take anything away from anybody, or to use, and I don't think, sometimes people don't realize that, to open a building, you need to furnish staff, cleaning, insurance, there, there's a huge amount of money that's spent on these things, so I, I like the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed. Opposed, Bill, Lori, Jesse, and Phyllis. Okay, the motion passes. All right, thank you. Let's go into, uh, presentations. All right. So the Vernon Housing Authority Board Chairman, Sean Haddon, stopped by last week with the authority's check, in lieu of taxes, in the amount of $107,074. So that was a, a nice little return. I'd like to remind everyone to take a moment and drive through Henry Park, and see the awesome job done by the maintenance crew of Parks and Recreation, stringing the holiday lights. Uh, thank you to the crew for their hard work. If you haven't driven through, you know, make sure you get a chance up there, the kids love it, and parents love it, you got a lot of, probably one of our most popular now. Tomorrow at noon, the Pickleball Place at, uh, the old Sears Hardware, down near Stop &amp; Shop in the Vernon section, is having a ribbon cutting, uh, so if you're available, stop by. And, I can't add, I'm not gonna add this in, but, into the motion on the other one, but, uh, on new motion, new business number two, there was a donation that's, we're gonna talk about, from TKB, and, uh, the President Tracy Oaks, for the future purchase of a K-9. They also gave $10,000 to the Police Explorers. We're not voting on it tonight, because the Police Explorers is a different, different unit, but I did want to make note that they gave $10,000 to the Police Explorers, okay? And that's all I have. Brian, we're gonna go into consent, but I want, we're gonna pull number three, so we'll do everything but number three.
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda, minus item number three, as presented.
Second.
Second by John. Are we pulling any of the other ones? No? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right, Brian, uh, the reason we pulled number three is, i-if you look at the proposed motion, we forgot to put Steve's name in there, so we're just gonna add Steve's name, uh, after reappearance of Stephen Ransom. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to Charter, Chapter Eight, Section One, Six, and Eleven, dated January 1st, 1985, CGS 8-Dash-4 A and B, the Town Council hereby approves Mayor Daniel A Champagne's reappearance of Stephen Ransom. Champagne's reapportment of Stephen Ransom, Vernon, Connecticut, as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to commence on January 1, 2025, and expires December 31, 2027.
Seconded by Jim. What'd you say? All right. Any comment on Steve? No? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Let's move on to new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the finalization of ARPA funds as presented.
Okay. So, the finalization, did we put a notice on it? Did we give everybody a...
There's a thing there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a second.
Jim seconded it.
Oh, Jim seconded it. I'm sorry. Did we put it, did we put the letter out at everybody's table?
Yeah, this was...
We did. That's the one. Okay. So, if you look at what's on the table, we have the Senior Center expansion at 147-Bolt Road, and then the additional costs are with Horowitz Pool House. As I explained before, the, actually, there's $270,408.52. What that does is that pays for the majority of the pool house, but there's going to be approximately 100, just over $100,000 short. That $100,000 short is going to come from funds left over ARPA, and anything we don't make up, we'll be back to the council to make up. Is there any questions in relation to that? Yes.
I just want to be sure. If we vote yes, we are voting to spend the 1.8 million for us...
We've already voted to spend that. This is just the finalization, and that would be the, basically, because that's already been voted for under the other one. The only other addition here is the 270,408.52.
Okay. So, we're confirming that vote and adding the money for the pool house.
This is just where the funds are coming from. This is just basically saying this is the ARPA money that's being used.
It's just the motion is satisfied.
Yeah, it's satisfy the ARPA.
ARPA requirements.
Anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Opposed. Abstention. What abstention, Phyllis? Okay. All right. Let's go to number two. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby graciously accepts the generous donation of $40,000 from the TKB Club and President Tracy Oaks for the future purchase mentioned above.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All right. So, this is a $40,000 donation for the purchase of another police dog. Right now, we only have one because of manpower. But just to say, we, because of what the town instituted in this last contract, we basically are almost fully staffed at the police department. So, I'm figuring maybe in 2025, we will be adding the other K-9 back, and this actually provides the money to do so. And that account can, that goes into, is an existing account that we essentially leave that money in there. So, there is still money left over from the last purchase. As you know, dogs are getting more and more expensive as we move on. Any questions on the acceptance of this? Lori?
To you, Mayor. To be clear, we're purchasing 40, one dog for $40,000?
No.
Okay.
No. The dog's going to be $30-something thousand. We're, all we're voting for today is accepting the donation.
To buy the dog in the future.
Right. Well, we're accepting it to put it into that account, which will result in the dog being purchased. Yes. Anybody else? That's a great donation, and I just want to thank him, and obviously, for the other $10,000, too. So, all right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of December 3, 2024, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Laura. Any corrections or deletions? No? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Jesse's abstaining. Okay. Hold on one second. Last December meeting, or last meeting in December for the holiday, I have a few refreshments for anybody that wants to join us in the, my office. Hopefully, they, this went a little faster than thought, so hopefully, they're all set up. But please join me to wishing everybody out there Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and or anything else that you do celebrate this time of the year. All right. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Thank you, guys.